So, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Can I get someone to make a motion to approve and accept the agenda, please?
I do.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Communications of parents, citizens, and staff. Is there anybody who'd like to talk to the board? Make a comment? You're coming later, so we'll grab you guys.
I just had some budget questions, but that's later.
Oh, yeah, if you want to ask those at that time, that would be fine. I just didn't know if there was anybody online who wanted to say something to the board, since there's a lot of them, so. I'm counting, three. Okay, hearing none, we are going to move on. Okay, oh, one thing you should have all noted in your packet was a letter regarding keeping world language, keeping the world language program, so keep that in your hat for when we talk budget. Consent agenda, can I have someone make a motion?
I move.
Okay, Fernanda is our second, Natalie seconds. All those that approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we're flying, flying, flying. Alright, so I was thinking, so as not to keep the football club here forever, hearing about budgets, that you, if it's alright with the board, that we allow them to speak first. Is that okay? Alright, so you're up.
Thank you for that privilege. We've been here before, Nate McKay, representing Outer Valley Football Club. It's our last meeting, we got approval from the school board to start a capital fundraising campaign, which has gone extremely well, it's approximately six months of length. I think our most recent numbers are around 173,000 and change, maybe. We're at the point now where the contract for the general manager, per se, would be nail our brain, Tanner Romano. We're here to ask permission that we can purchase the lights and start purchasing material, get contracts for the in-kind donations, which would be electrical, excavating, crane work, concrete.
Concrete.
Concrete. We're at that point where we'd like to get permission to make those purchases and get going, so we can have this project ready for this fall season.
So you were, the original quote was that it was gonna cost $250,000?
$250,000 if we had to pay for all labor and all
Okay.
material.
Retail, retail.
Retail, so at this point, you seem to think you have in-kind donations that will
Yes, ma'am.
bring you down to, that you only need the 173, or?
Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna let Tanner speak to that.
Is that okay? You wanna speak to that?
Yep, we have written in-kind donations for all the packages, to be able to get the lights installed.
Okay.
And we cross-checked the numbers with Brenda to confirm what you guys have been transferred in terms of actual funds. So what you had in front of you is just a quick summary of what's transpired, because it's gone kinda quick. It's also got the retail value estimate, as well as the value after the in-kind donations, to get down to your total dollar amount, which drives with what we have for funding in place for cash. And then the last section is the, those three lighting packages that were evaluated for the field. That's the score sheet that evaluates all the criteria for the three lighting packages and the ones that were selected.
Which one did you say?
Cooper. It's a Cooper lighting package is the lowest qualified proposal. So again, just to recap from October, this is all, no cost in the school district, this was all done with in-kind donations and cash donations from the community.
And the Cooper's been field-tested, because they're getting put in stadiums now.
Oh, yeah, yep. The big criteria is that L-70 criteria, which is basically the metrics that lighting packages are measured for, sports lighting.
Yeah.
Which they all need.
And so Brenda, is there $173,000 in the account currently?
There's 154, and I think the football club has some still transferred.
Correct.
Okay.
Tanner, what's CM stand for?
The M stand?
CM, contract.
Construction management, and Brenda can expand on that, but even to donate our services that manage this, we had to go through a procurement process, and Brenda had to get a bid waiver from the state of Vermont, I forget the acronym, excuse me.
Agency of Vermont.
Agency of Vermont. So, in order for us to conduct that and donate our services, we had to go through that process.
Thanks.
It's pretty impressive, turning around so fast.
Well, we've got a small group, we've got a lot of community support, you know, everybody, I mean even tonight's meeting, you know, another $7,000 in checks and another $5,000 commitment next week, you know, people are, people are behind this project, you know. It's here, it's for the schools, for the kids, it's gonna be generational, you know, and we wanted it for a long time, it just finally, you know, took some work to get it going, but now, you know, we've got good momentum.
We fumbled, we fumbled a little bit in the beginning, not knowing the process, right? But Brenda helped us out, so, no pun intended.
It is a process, for sure.
But we got there.
And again, you know, I think, the end, the best part of this whole thing is, football's gonna use it four times a year, and the rest of it is gonna be, the majority of the use is gonna be by other school functions, and so, and it's gonna be there, it'll be available.
Questions for the football club?
I guess, just under structural engineering and concrete basis, it says, with these proposals, is that a commitment, or is that what you're hoping?
Oh, both, it's a, it's a commitment from an engineer that we work with, so, you know, when you explain it's for the kids, it's a do-gooder project, that all of this has become in-kind services essentially.
All of this committed money.
Correct. And that one has already been paid for by the football club.
So if we order lights tonight, when do you foresee that, do you foresee this being done before school starts, or?
We can't order lights tonight. This process will allow us to put a purchase order in, to get the actual submittal package from Cooper, which then we're blessed to have a master electrician on the football club to vet that and make sure we're cross-referencing voltages and all that good stuff to tie into the school system.
Sure.
Then we'll actually put it on order. The bases come first, and then the light tree, they call it, comes next, but all that is about eight to 12 weeks, so, if we get the approval tonight, and we put that all in motion, we can be installing these in July and August.
Is there one on either end, or is there several around?
There's four poles, sorry, I held up three, but four poles. Two behind the bleachers and two on the other side behind the benches.
In a motion?
Yep.
They all move that we authorize the football club, boosters, whatever you guys officially call, to go ahead with the light project and the purchase of the Cooper light.
Is that right, Brenda, or?
You have to authorize us to go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
It's actually flowing through you guys now.
Okay, same substitute.
Substitute.
Yeah, substitute Otter Valley for football boosters.
Alright, and I heard Brett second that. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, there you go.
Very impressive.
Alright, so we're going to move back to monitoring report 2.4, which is the monitoring report from Kristen, financial planning and budgeting, you should have found it in your packet on page, I'm not sure what page. Barbara, Barbara is on one, okay.
Financial planning and budgeting, page 15.
Okay, so it's on page 15 of your packet, are you sharing?
I'm listening. All of these.
Is there any discussion regarding the monitoring report that Kristen provided regarding financial reporting? Okay, hearing none, can I get someone to make the motion to approve or accept Kristen's monitoring report?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor of accepting 2.4?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Alright, excuse me, board management delegation, we're gonna talk about our own board monitoring reports, the first one is 4.3, agenda planning. You can find that in your packet.
Page 18.
Thank you.
Oh, that's good.
I know, that's good, I'm glad, thank you. Page 18 through page, page 20. So this is what we had from last year, we usually update it every year, or look at it. Natalie, did you, you had sent me something, did you want to bring that up now?
I just want to comment on one of the policy items.
Okay.
About board members recommending items for discussion on an agenda.
Yep.
To just reiterate that we have five days.
What number is that?
It's a, number three. Our policy is that you have to submit it to the chair no later than five days, and it is VLCT, which is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns' opinion, which is their lawyers, that we cannot submit items the day of at the meeting, that it has to be an emergency item, which is allowed, but everything else should be submitted at least five days before, because we haven't been following that, and so I'm just pointing that out as one of the examples of where we did or did not follow this.
Okay.
And to ensure that going forward, we're following the policy and the laws for open meeting law.
Okay.
Items added at the beginning of a meeting don't violate open meeting law, though.
They do.
No, they don't.
I, actually, I can show it to you.
Well, in that case, I'm gonna disagree with the policy, because I think it's gonna be too restrictive on us, and as I've stated in the past, I've had trouble getting things on the agenda, months delay.
That is not true, and I'm going to say that, because there have been times I've put it on the agenda and then you were not here.
It happened once, for a family emergency.
It happened more than that, and then there's also.
I'm tired of hearing about it.
So, I don't, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna belay the point, but the point is, is that I think most of you would say that recently, if you bring something to the agenda, or that you tell me that you want to bring it on, I would put it on, and you blindsided me with that last one, which was a slap in the face, and I didn't appreciate it, I'll be very completely honest about that, and I think that we should follow this policy, because what you brought forth was, we had members leave in the middle because of the basketball game, and they didn't get to weigh in, so I think it's important that you keep your board chair apprised of the things that you want to bring forth, and if I think it's important, we'll put it on there, nine times out of 10, we do.
That's the problem with Lori, when you think it's important.
I happen to be the chair, so I get to make that choice.
I have my hand up.
Sorry.
Thank you for bringing this up, Natalie, actually. I think this also gets into open meeting law, perhaps, and what is warned on the agenda for public to know is going to be at a meeting. We can't be throwing things on the agenda at the last minute, because it's not right in court, you know, people that we represent might want to be at that meeting, so we, that's why we have this policy.
And I provided the FAQs, the, the.
If anybody would like to look at it.
So Lori can pass that out to the board members, but these are, the VLCT is the place to go to when you want to know about open meeting laws and, and public policy, and it is their opinion, that a public body, it says specifically, does not have free rein to alter a meeting agenda at the last minute, you have within, the agenda has to be posted at least 20, or 48 hours before the meeting. Now, if it were an emergency, and something that had to be immediately discussed, we could table it for a special meeting the next day, but it cannot be discussed, because the public has not been warned about it. It's about letting the public be in on the conversation. So this isn't about us as a board members wanting to get our agenda out, it's about making sure that the public knows what we're gonna be talking about every single meeting, and giving them ample notice to prepare and come if they want to be part of the discussion, so, and that's Vermont open meeting law.
No, it's contrary to the Vermont statute. This is the recommendation of, I forgot the acronym, but that's, that's not what the Vermont statute says.
It specifically says that the law was amended in 2014, it can only be added or removed from a meeting agenda as the first order of business. You can only add something if, like I said, it's an emergency, or something that has a strict deadline that we have to discuss in the next few days.
Well, I looked up the statute, and I didn't see anything about emergencies, I did see the part about adding it and removing it as the first order of business, which is
Correct.
part of adopting the agenda, which is what happened last time.
I just want to clarify, you're, you're interpreting the statute, that's your interpretation. The VLCT is where you go when you want to know what their opinion is on the interpretation of that statute.
But they're also interpreting the statute.
But they're lawyers.
Right, but.
You know, the deference to agencies and lawyers is, I think, part of the problem in Vermont, this, this is not a difficult statute to interpret, it's, it's short, it's simple, and it says what it says. They may think it's advisable to do things this way, there's an argument, you just made it, for making sure the public knows things in advance, but the idea that, you know, and obviously the word emergency is undefined, right? So, you know, the law is what it's set, what it is, and one of the problems with Vermont in general, is we're restricting ourselves from being able to act by being tied up in bureaucratic red tape, in looking for montpelier for approvals, in saying we can't do things in frankly, policy governance. If we're gonna act as a democratically elected representative body, we need the flexibility to act, and that's my argument.
But we also, the, the public has the right to be a part of that decision-making, and when you, you bring it up at the very last minute, they are not part of that conversation.
Well, they're not part of the conversation anytime they're not here.
But they have the opportunity, and when you bring it up at the last minute, you have not given them that opportunity to join.
Right, this is a representative body, we're elected.
Wait a quarter, Fernanda has her hand up.
Fernanda.
I guess my, my feeling is, regardless of the interpretation that we take, I find it respectful as a board member to not post things, to not make decisions in the last minute, and to give the public their warning. So I would prefer it if we followed that interpretation as a board, out of respect for the people we represent.
And that's why I bring it up, it's not about law.
And that's, that's, it doesn't matter what interpretation or the law says, it just feels to me.
It's respectful and our public wants to know about conversations we're having.
Well, we're gonna have a conversation about respect on this board, needs to be a much longer conversation, and I'll leave that at, there.
Brett?
I, I think there's a couple of different things here, right, so it definitely should be best practice, to try to bring things up as early as possible. The five days thing, I have a lot of problems with that, we don't even get our packet until four days before the meeting, so that makes it pretty tough to add anything.
I mean, you're supposed to notify the board, or the board chair five days prior, so that allows me to put it on the agenda before you get it.
Right, so if I anticipate something to be on the agenda, and then the packet comes out and it's not, I've already, that window has closed.
Well, there's always the, there's always something that could have happened where Melinda didn't, I, you know, because Melinda's the one who puts to get that together, so if you would notify me, or if I looked at the agenda, I'd be like, oh no, this is wrong, and we can re, we can re-put it back out. I mean, it's supposed to go out 48 hours before, we send it out 72 hours before, so we have time to amend it if we need to.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is, there isn't a lot of time for us to react if we want to add something to the agenda if it's not there. Best practice, yes, we should try to follow as much as possible, but I don't think we should be taking the stance of, you cannot add anything to the agenda unless you follow the five-day rule, that's too restrictive.
In addition, Lori, you've already mentioned that if you don't think it's a good idea, you're reluctant to put things on the agenda.
That's not true, and it hasn't been true in the last six to eight months, I put, if you want to put it on the agenda, we've put it on the agenda. Ask anybody if I haven't put something on the agenda that they've asked for. No, in the last six to eight months.
I agree with that, I think there has been a shift where we've been pretty fair.
And I can't put it on the agenda if you don't ask. So, we can put, I, I think we should note that we didn't follow that particular part of the policy in that meeting, so I will notate that. Is there any other areas where we need to bring this up, or any other areas that you want to see modified? I think it's important, though, that we try and follow this policy as much as possible, and again, you know, I'm not sure what would come up within five days that we couldn't wait till the next meeting if we needed to, to talk about something, or if it is something that needs to be done, we call a special meeting.
Can I ask a question, a clarifying question? So the, the meetings are on Tuesdays, the agendas come out on Friday?
Yes.
So it's actually, we got more than five days.
You have, well, you've got four, yeah.
Four days in which to respond, to see if a review needs to be made and a new agenda reassured, like if something was missed.
I would like to see the packet come out.
I asked you to put in an item, it didn't get on the agenda, I get the agenda on Friday.
Well, sometimes what's happening is that all of the backup doesn't come to Melinda until Friday, we, you know.
I, I get that, when our meetings were on Wednesdays, we still got the packet on Friday, so we lost a day.
But what I'm saying is, you're, we're getting the agenda on a Friday, it doesn't have to be published until.
Two days before.
Two days before, so when does it?
Sunday.
It's Sunday, so if, if there were an item missing that you thought was gonna be on the agenda, there's still leeway in which to get it revised and back on.
If our policy said four days, or three days.
No, but what I'm saying is, you submitted something, you don't see it on the agenda, that's the only reason you would want to go back, you submitted it in five day, within the five-day window, it didn't get on, now you would call it.
Not necessarily, it could be something we talked about in a previous meeting, and we anticipated it being on the agenda, and for some reason it got pushed, because we didn't have time, or, I mean, this stuff happens all the time, we don't know what's happening in the background till we see the packet.
And then there's, so she, she publishes it on Friday, and you have to, a day and a half to let them know to change it, as long, I can tell you, last night in planning commission, we had to cancel a meeting because it was not properly warned, it has to be two days before, you can't talk about anything that's on that agenda unless it's properly warned.
Then we need to change the policy to three days.
Seth Hopkins came in.
It can't say five, because we don't have five days.
Five is for us, is for us, and then you have another two days, if, if absolutely necessary, and it was an emergency, and an emergent issue, but otherwise.
Right, I mean, if it's less than five days, then it's an emergency, like if we have to talk about it that day, because it didn't get on the agenda, then it's emergent, right, if it happened within five days, like it happened that weekend. I, I can't think of anything that we're talking about that would have fallen into that category.
Or added at the beginning of the meeting, which is allowable.
I mean, but, it's not allowable.
No, it's not, it's not allowable, unless it's emergent issue, that has to be discussed and has a timeframe. Just wanting to talk about something is different from it being an emergency, like feeling that you have to talk about a thing is different from an actual emergency, and so the, the policy outlines what we can do, if we think, huh, I want to talk about this the next meeting, like this meeting ends today, and I think, oh, I want to put something on the agenda, I've got two weeks, I've got a little bit less than two weeks to think about it, so then, you know, five days before the next meeting, I say, okay, is that right? Am I doing the math right here? Maybe I'm not doing the math right here, I don't want to say it wrong, five days before the next meeting, like by the, by like Thursday before the next Tuesday meeting? I send something to Lori, hey, can we put this on the next agenda? And she says, sure, and then she sends it to Melinda, yeah? And Melinda throws it on the agenda, I mean, you know, basically, better if I don't wait till Thursday, better if I late, you know, Wednesday, whatever, but it's like, and then Melinda compiles it, I mean, you know, there's all these little pieces that have to fit into place, minutes are coming in from Charlene, and reports are coming in from Kristen, and you know, other people, so it's all getting compiled in the, in the packets that go out, so all of these, you know, things to be added on, Melinda has to get them all together and send them out, so, you know, there's a few different areas of like honoring people's roles in the process, there's Melinda and her role, and honoring her is maybe, you know, not last-minute-ing it, honoring Lori's role as the chair is not last-minute-ing it or, and not like end-around-ing her, honoring the people that are, you know, in our community that we represent, it's wanting them to know what's on the agenda. Long ago, early in my days of being on the board, there was a meeting, and I believe somebody threw something on the agenda at the last minute, and it had to do with Caverly, and nobody from Pittsburgh was at the meeting, because it hadn't been warned, and a vote was taken, and then the next meeting, there were a lot of people from Pittsburgh who were not happy, and the vote got reversed, because it wasn't right, it was not an open, it violated open meeting law, because they hadn't known it was gonna happen at that meeting. That's the kind of thing we can't do, we can't be taking actions that people need to know about ahead of time. When I heard about this, the, the meeting where the letter was introduced, I hadn't known about it, I had no idea what was going on, I heard about it afterward, and I was like, what, what, we took action? We took action on a thing I didn't even have a chance to know about? I wasn't happy about that, I want to know what's being said on, that I'm signing on to, and I want to know about it ahead of time, because it's in the packet, and so that, you know, and that, that's why we have the policies, that's what policies are for, it's not to protect just us, it's all of the other people in the system as well.
I guess I view this policy as actually encouraging us to violate it. I'll use this as an example, and I'm not picking on Kevin, but if we are going to have a facilities discussion, which we usually do this time of year, and Kevin wants to talk about tech ed and allocating money for that purpose, and we don't find out when that is going to be happening until we get our packet, oh, next Tuesday, we're gonna be talking about the facilities budget for the next year, should we not have a mechanism to say, hey, I would like to talk about tech ed? That might be something he's been waiting all year to talk about. I guess I, am I missing something?
Yes, because you have to do proper planning. Last minute doesn't work in, in a public board setting, we cannot.
But that's us being flexible, we don't know when Brenda might be here to give that presentation.
No, we're elected officials, we have to.
Our discussion of Spanish and world languages was not warned, we had a lengthy discussion about it, the superintendent apparently took that discussion into mind and changed the budget based on it, it was not warned, there was no public notice, there was, there was no attendance of individuals who wanted to talk about it, none of that.
It was in the packet.
And also, we didn't vote on it either.
It was in the budget proposal.
It wasn't, it wasn't. It was in the budget proposal, which is in the packet, which the public has access to.
Alright, I want to talk about, this is cited as Vermont Section 312, and it's the, the part on meeting agendas, it's Section 2 of subsection, it's Chapter 5, Common Law General Rights, Subchapter 2, and then subsection 2 of that.
Are you referring to the statute?
Yeah, this is the open meeting law. A meeting agenda shall be made available to a person prior to the meeting upon specific requests, blah, blah, blah.
What's, can you get me to the statute, so I can look at it while you're talking about it?
Yeah, it's just, it's cited as Vermont Section 312, just look for it that way.
Okay, I'm at the, okay, right to attend meetings of public agencies, that?
Yes.
Meetings of public bodies, okay, gotcha.
Okay, so, Section 3.
I'm gonna stop you for a second, please, and the reason I'm gonna stop you is because we're all interpreting opening meeting law to our own. to our own thoughts and to everybody's own interpretation. And so instead of doing that, I would prefer to table this to the next meeting, or the meeting after, whenever, and have Pietro Lynn come in, who is our lawyer, and tell us exactly how open meeting law works.
Well, this is one sentence. It's pretty simple.
I don't, I'm telling you that that's your interpretation. She has her interpretation.
I'm going to read to you Vermont law. It's not my interpretation.
We don't need to hear it.
You do need to hear it. Any addition to or deletion from the agenda shall be made as the first act of business of the meeting. That's it.
I would also, but I think it's important...
There's case law. And I'm not going to go into it.
I realize that this is an energizing topic for everyone, and I think it would make most sense if we had the lawyer here, our lawyer, who can interpret it for us and how it needs to go down, so that we're all on the same page.
Can we also ask for a recommendation on what our policy should state?
What our policy should state? I mean, well, he's going to come in and tell you what open meeting law dictates, and probably, yeah, I mean, you could ask him, sure. We wouldn't make, but we wouldn't actually change it in that meeting because we'd have to warn that.
Be five days before to put it on there.
But I don't get my packet until four days.
Maybe you should request it now.
I mean, if we want to talk about this the next meeting, I don't know what we're talking about otherwise at the next meeting, so I'm not...
Well, it just seems that it's on everybody's mind, and I think it's important that if it's on everybody's mind, and we all have different interpretations of how this is supposed to work, that the best thing to do is that I think we would all listen to the lawyer, or at least I would hope we would, because he's looking out for us as a board. Am I wrong in that?
No, and I would suggest that when he's available, that's when we put it on the agenda. Because we can say we want it on two weeks, but he won't be available.
That's true. So, but I'm just saying that I think it needs to be done sooner rather than later.
Can I ask one question of Kevin? It's a single answer.
Please, no. Wait till the lawyer's here. So...
Maybe ask for legal advice.
All right. So we're going to table 4.3 Agenda Planning until Pietro can be with us. All right. Do we dare talk about the chair's role? Because I'm thinking that you're not going to like that one either. So...
The chair is good with levity in times of stress.
Any comments, changes?
Didn't pay me enough money to do it.
Thank you, Barbara. Please make sure that's in the minutes, would you?
How much extra do you get?
Not enough. Not enough. It's not 150. It's actually more than that.
No, 750, I think, isn't it?
It's like half again as much.
It's half. It's half whatever we get.
She didn't used to get it at all.
That's true. She didn't used to get it at all.
She didn't used to get it at all.
It was a consolation prize.
Doesn't matter how much it is. It's not enough.
I know. All right. So nobody sees any changes that they want to make to this one?
No. No, but can I say something that vaguely germane to what you were talking about? On our calendar, that big year-long calendar, in May, we do the facilities discussion. That's how you know.
Oh, you're talking about the work plan?
That's how you know. Yes, the work plan.
That's how you know, if you look at the work plan.
That's how you know. I knew there was an answer to that question. I had to find it first, though.
It's called planning.
All right. So we're all set with the chair's role. We're not making any changes. We're going to move on before we want to make lots of changes.
We don't follow it.
Okay. Fiscal year 25 budget, next steps. That would be you, Brenda.
Yeah. So I think you all have what I sent out. I tried to take into account what we talked about, as well as, you know, recognizing where our real challenges are. And so the first one, the report that kind of looks like this, you know, with the grid on the top, and it shows you some actuals, and it shows you your first reduction, which was a one cent. What are the things you're going to do to get to a one-cent reduction? Are we all on it? We're good? So I called that revote one cent. I know I'm clever with names. I think I'm the one who named the blue house in Pittsburgh. And then the second one...
You can call it the red house.
And the second one next to it is what would happen if three cents. And so the one-cent reductions are just a little bit over. One cent is around 207,000. We actually felt that we got to 268. We didn't think we should, you know, kind of nickel and dime and push things over. We believe that that would be what we could reduce to save a little bit more than one cent. And then the three-cent one is a little bit deeper, as you asked, and what we could reduce to save just a smidgen over three cents. Three cents would be about 621. We still do not know, nor will we know, probably until the end of May, what the yield is. We have updated numbers on what the average education spending is. The agency provided that information to me March 22nd, and they said that the preliminary per pupil spending, based on that new pupil count, long-term weighted average AVM, is And so why that's important is how do we compare to that? That's the average of the projected spending for fiscal year '24. So our average in these two proposals, I have to find my write sheet here. The one-cent reduction would be 12,435, and the three-cent reduction would be 12,266. So in the one-cent reduction, we're approximately $900 less than the state average, and the three cents is more than that. Can't do those little numbers, you all know that. I also tried to help illustrate in kind of a draft sort of flyer what is really causing the tax exhaustion, which I recognize is real and respect, and that is that the common level of appraisals are low. They're lower than we've seen. They've been heading that way, the three-year average, and they started in 2020. So I did actually graph, yeah, if you go to the last page, Kristen, thank you. So this, a little bit farther up, if you could. So this graph, that's a little bit messy because you have six towns. It's really hard to do this all together. Those, all those different lines, the ones that don't have the red line and the red words next to it, are what is happening to the Otter Valley equalized tax rate, the one with the red line, after you adjust it for common level of appraisal. So the graph above it shows you that in 2020, when we started this, this graph, we were almost all at right around 100%. And then we started going down. And as our CLAs go down, our tax rates go up. And so I wanted to make sure that people could see that. So if you look at the blue column for Brandon, the blue column for Sudbury, Sudbury must have reappraised because they were a smidgen over 100% in 2020. And then over the years, with the house sales, we've been seeing, compared to how they are listed on the ground list, they've been declining. And you can see that. So that's an inverse reaction. Tax rates are moved up to adjust that. So if you go back to the tax rates, I think it's important to recognize that our tax rate at that same time was $1.42, $1.48, and the proposed, and this was the defeated budget, was $1.29. So our tax rates are trending in the right direction. Common level of appraisal is changing our tax rates to what people pay, which is real. I respect that, but to what people pay based on the value of their homes. The other thing that's really challenging with that is this is a broad brush stroke correction. So the correction is to the tax rate, and we all know, I don't know what happened to Goshen, but the one property must have sold for a lot, but we all know that not every property in every town actually went down 30%. So if you look at, you know, Sudbury, for example, the properties on the lake probably are probably rising higher than 30%. Properties farther away from the lake aren't rising as much as 30%, but because the adjustment is to the tax rate, everyone is rising as if they were all fairly appraised. And they're not. But I don't have a solution for a better system. This is the system we have. So I'm not really sure if or how I can answer any additional questions.
Brett?
Well, a couple. You said, you keep saying that "we" came up with this. I'm not sure who "we" is, and I'm not even sure how you come up with all these different deductions. Last time in our meeting, we had talked about looking into the higher-ups and not just cutting from the schools and the teachers and all this. I don't see any of that on there. So "we" didn't decide to do any of that or look into that, or didn't work?
So the "we" is all of the principals and every director at the supervisory union. So it's special ed, Kristen, all of the principals. I gotta read my...
That's okay. I didn't know who did it all. That's why I kept hearing "we." I didn't know who "we" was.
That's who "we." So the Runtland Northeast Assessments is the first reduction. So there was $135,000, $165,000, $64,000.
The Assessments is what?
The central office.
The central office.
And that's the office itself. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
And that went down, Otter Valley's share was about 135, Barstow's share was about 29,000. Then we eliminated a late run. We eliminated Nordic Ski, and we eliminated a dean of students.
Yeah, I guess that in Assessments was who I was referring to.
Right. So in line one, with the exception of the late run and the Nordic Ski, and honestly, the reason they were eliminated, and the reason we didn't play a game and throw that over into round two, is because they don't exist today. They existed when we did the budget, as you know. You've all heard us talk about bus driver shortages. We found that we had to combine the late run and could do without it. So we eliminated the late run, and we had nobody enrolling or signing up for Nordic Skiing. So we eliminated Nordic Skiing.
I would love a question.
Natalie?
Can you, what falls under general and admin and school office?
So, I have to get my right papers here. So school office is just that. That's the principal, the school secretary, you know, their salaries and their benefits, the supplies for the office. Yeah, that's it.
So where does the dean of students sit, then?
So the dean of students sits in student support services. Then the general and administration, the function 2300, you might hear me refer to it. It's really district-wide operations. So that's the board. That's your stipends, the treasurers, the moderator, which is hardly worth counting, with those type of salaries and benefits. It also includes legal fees. So the Berditt Fund, legal fees, or when we have to incur legal fees either for lawsuits or policy development, that's, you know, district-wide, right? So it's not specific to a school. It's something broader. The audit, and printing of the annual report. So just in general, I'm going to give you general numbers instead of the exact, but so the legal services are between $15,000 and $10,000 every year. In fiscal year 2023, they were actually 16,000. We budgeted 10,000. The stipends, honorariums are 19,005 plus related taxes.
And who are those for?
You guys. Board honorariums. Tuition reimbursement, so that is any professional development for board members. It's another budget of 20,000. Audit services, 24,000. Printing and publishing and binding for the annual report, 10,000. And interest on short-term borrowing of 20,000. And that's borrowing in anticipation of taxes.
First off, I want to say I found this so much easier to understand than the PowerPoint presentation. Maybe that's just me, so that's just an opinion, but I found this to be quite easy to understand compared to in the past where I've been very confused. I guess my question, and this is a complicated one, and Marcia's not here, so maybe no one can answer it, but I don't understand, with special ed, there's different funding sources, and some things come from one bucket, some things come from another bucket. Can anybody give like a really high level of like what comes out of our budget versus what might be like Medicaid or...
Is she on? I can do it.
I don't see her.
Yeah. So first of all, Medicaid isn't special education. Medicaid is prevention and intervention. We use, while it is earned by IEP services, we use it for all of our mental health services, not all of them, but many of our mental health contracts in the schools. There are state funding, called the Census-Based Block Grant, and that covers, it's a flat amount that we know, that we get given every year budget time, and that gets kind of, that covers approximately 60% of our special education costs. There is an extraordinary student cost, and that's for any student who costs more than 66,000. There's a formula to pay them back, pay us back for their services at a higher reimbursement rate. We also get paid or reimbursed for students who are in our school district but do not belong to our school district. They're foster students living in our towns, but their parents live elsewhere. Those are called state-place students. That's reimbursed at 100%. So at the supervisory union level, and then there's IDEAAB, which is a federal law that is a flat dollar amount based on the number of IEP kids we have on December 1st of every year. So at the supervisory union level, we put together the supervisory union special services budget, and then we fill in the buckets based on what we can spend them on. So for example, the IDEAAB funding is federal funding. We can spend it on solely IEP services. We choose to spend it on paraeducators, because when you spend it on paraeducators, you don't have to pay a federal teacher retirement tax. If we put teachers in there, we have to pay a 30% teacher retirement cost. So we look at each of the budgets and each of the sources to determine what expense fits best in each of those columns. The net, so the total budget, minus the things that fit nicely in each of those columns, that net is what is assessed out in the assessments.
Which is about what percent of the total budget? 30?
I would not dare answer that off the top of my head. There was a time when I could say with confidence it was 40%, but that was a reimbursement model.
Yeah.
And a reimbursement model is a bad way to do business. This is actually, it's much nicer to have the Census-Based Block Grant. It gives teachers flexibility, so they literally don't have to count how many minutes they service Johnny versus how many minutes were in Johnny's IEP. Now they can service Johnny because Johnny's an at-risk student who needs SLP services, and they can provide it.
Yeah.
Okay. Kevin?
So first, I want to just address Brett's question, sorry, Brent's question a little bit. Brent, the RNSU assessment is what Otter Valley, OVU, pays toward RNSU. We pay 85% of the RNSU budget. Barstow pays about 15. The decision to cut the RNSU budget and reduce that assessment was an RNESU board decision. Now, this is a case where our interest is a board, and Barstows don't necessarily coincide. Their budget went down, but it only went down by four votes. They're not too worried about resubmitting their budget. Therefore, they're not worried about cutting back on the RNSU assessment either. They're happy with the arrangement. Today, for example, I heard from someone in Brandon who said, I'm unhappy. I want to see cuts go to central office and not to the people who interact directly with students. We can't affect that except by this RNESU reduction. The RNSU board voted for one... The RNESU board voted for one percent. My guess is the RNESU board will be reluctant to vote lower than one percent. I'll, I'll raise it at the next meeting, but we'll, uh, I, I, I don't think that would pass. I don't think it would get a second.
Have you had discussions about what you could reduce it though? I mean, I, and this may be outside what we're trying to talk about, but there, like, there's stuff that's in IEPs that like, it's, it's just there. You can't, can't ignore it.
Can't touch it, right?
Yeah.
I would like to, I would like to clarify something just to make sure everybody understands because I think that people might not. Rotten Northeast exists to service schools. We are not just an administrative office. All special education costs are in Rotten Northeast. That's direct service to kids. That's teachers, that's speech language pathologists, that's paraeducators, that's transportation of students to specialized programs, that's equipment for students. That's all direct to students with a small exception of administration, which is Marcia and, uh, in next year's budget, Marcia, uh, secretary and, um, two coordinators, one for elementary education and one for high school. Then there's transportation. That's to and from school. That's solely for students. That's to and from school. To and from Stafford, to and from specialized programs, to and from Hanaford, field trips, co-curricular, all of that, that's also in that budget. Then there's information technology. Every equipment, every software, every device is in that budget for all of the schools. That's not information technology to service the central office. The only amount that is, um, administrative in that office is the superintendent's office, the business office, and curriculum. And curriculum, one could argue, is really for, you know, teachers and supporting students. So I think there's a misnomer to think or paint it with a broad brush stroke. The RNESU doesn't provide any services to students. That's simply not true.
And if I could add, um, RNESU did not need to reopen their budget. It in fact was the RNESU central office administrators who went to the RNESU board and asked for the board to reopen the budget, and we proposed the a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars of reductions. That wasn't a mandate for us. That was us coming, going to the board and saying, we feel this because we provide support for schools. Here's what we think we're willing and able to make reductions. In addition to those second round reductions that again were not required, just a reminder when you see, when you saw the budget proposals, which unfortunately were PowerPoint presentations, so Brett probably wasn't paying attention. But there were, there, sure. Um, but there were many reductions at the RNESU central office level in the very first budget. So those don't just show back up. Debbie's office, for instance, reduced many instructional coaches. We reduced intervention staff. We reduced things at our level as well. So in addition to what Brenda said, it isn't that we're not sort of doing our part as well.
So that leads me to, um, what I, I'm going to reformulate Brent's question and what I think is probably what he wanted to know. What was caught in, uh, the hundred and thirty-four thousand or whatever it was that from, uh, where is it? The part that, uh, the, the percentage of our, of that hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that is the RNESU assessment, what are those cuts going toward now?
So we eliminated, um, a Rotten Mental Health clinician contract, contracted for a specialized program. We eliminated one special educator and moved the, uh, the elementary coordinator to Neshabie. And then we eliminated the part-time bus driver and only replaced it with a smidgen for bus driver training so that we can hopefully, um, attract and train, recruit, attract, train, and maintain bus drivers. Anyone want to be one? Just asking.
So since you mentioned transportation, I have a follow-up on that too.
Sure.
All the places that you were, um, mentioning, is, do we provide transportation to burn burden or, and/or have we in the past?
We have in the past. Special education has in the past.
And that would be for a, a Barstow student?
I think we shouldn't get that detailed.
We cannot get that detailed, and it's special ed, and if it's part of a person's plan, that's part of the person's plan.
Sorry.
So you can't change that stuff.
Can?
Brett?
The, you just mentioned something about shifting a coordinator to Neshabie. Can, that one confused me. Can you explain a little bit more about that?
So we had in the budget for a new special educator at Neshabie. And we had, um, an, uh, we have an elementary coordinator of special services. And we decided with Marcia's retirement and an incoming new, um, director of special services, it would be better to kind of divide and conquer her workload by placing a coordinator at Neshabie to help oversee all of the IEPs and the scheduling and being the LEA at Neshabie like we have at the high school. So the new director would be responsible for the other sites. They still report to the new director, but they help support that position.
Okay.
Okay.
Takes away time from what special educators would be doing?
Yes.
To represent that.
Yeah.
It gives them more job service time in order to.
Right.
Other questions for Brenda?
So the, the, um, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the reduction in special ed instruction. Which one of those is that in the?
That's in the Rotten Northeast Assessment.
Okay. All right.
I don't know if you saw, Lori, but Barbara would sneak her hand up.
Well, I apologize.
No, no, it's okay. Um, when we go through the list of positions that were created with Esser funds and then that we've lost through the Esser cliff. I'm not sure how to ask this question. Have, have, are we hanging on to administrative central office positions? I don't know. Is there a percentage of like positions we lost that are direct facing to students? That didn't exist before COVID versus positions, administrative positions that didn't exist before COVID? Like what's the rough breakdown of what we've lost in both categories?
So I created that report two weeks ago.
Okay.
And the way my life has been, that's like a year ago. So I, um, would have to relook at that. I, I don't want to make an error in memory.
Is it something that we, you gave us and I should just look for?
It, it is in the packet with.
Then I'll just.
Was it two meetings ago or three meetings ago? I think Brett, you asked for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it was the last meeting.
I think, maybe I didn't fully understand your question, but I think maybe you're asking a slightly different question than what we got last time.
Might give you the answer you want, though.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Is your question?
Well, we showed, we, I'll, I'll, we, we showed this, we showed this to you last time, and again, it's, a, a couple of weeks feels like a really long time. Um, but we did it, you can find it online. Last time it came out as a spreadsheet and as a PDF. We tell you the description of them, right? Are they a paraeducator? Are they an administrator and assistant principal? Are they a teacher? Are they a coach? What their work site is, how they were funded, and then whether they are continued, being added, coming out of the budget, like being reduced. Many of these positions were already cut in the first, um, budget presentation.
You have to wade your own way through there.
I, I remember the graphic. I just, um.
And there may be slight changes to this too, right?
I don't know where it is.
No.
Can I, can I ask your question a different way?
Sure, please.
Maybe I know what you're trying to ask.
I can use all the help I can get.
Were more admin positions that were created through Esser funds retained than direct teaching or direct student-facing positions? That were?
No. So, no, so when Esser.
That's a question that P, I've been asked by the community.
So, so sort of like with a lot of things, like what really does RNESU central office do? These are all administrators. That's just not the reality of the work, right? That, that is just when we talk about who RNESU is, it's because that's the group that is at a centralized level, like our instructional coaches, our interventionists. Many of them work for RNESU, but that doesn't mean they don't have a work site or they're not out providing direct services to student. So in Esser, administrative positions that were added was an assistant principal at Otter Valley, which they now is a part of the Ovu budget, but they reduced the dean of students.
Traded, right.
They traded, right?
Yeah.
Um, uh, an assistant principal and a dean of students at Neshabie who had nothing, right? Because Judy Pulsover can manage five hundred kids, like walk around like this. So during COVID, we actually added, uh, an assistant principal and a dean of students for Neshabie, um, funded through Esser. And you'll see in our one cent, is, does it show up in the one cent?
Mm-hmm.
We talk about hanging on to the assistant principal, which we believe is important not only to support the social, emotional, behavioral, but also the instructional leadership position. But we do put the dean of students up.
This is Neshabie we retain.
This is Neshabie. So those are the only, and then there, again, there's sort of misinformation that's out there. We have a new director of safe schools who is not funded with Esser. He's funded with a special climate and safety grant.
That is not in our budget.
No. And, and you might recall, um, I'm sure you all do recall, last year, a lot of the tension that came to this level was specifically around school safety, right? Was around our ability to keep our buildings safe and our kids safe. So we prioritize that out of that safe, um, that safety and climate grant. Um, and so he does emergency operations planning, supports threat assessment, and what he does more than anything is support hazing harassment and bullying and Title IX. So we continue to see the benefit of that, which is why that lives in that safety and climate grant. So those are the only administrative ones that were added in Esser. You'll see OBs is already gone and Neshabies we're suggesting may, you may want to reduce. Um, and the rest you can sort of see in the chart we presented.
In case anyone's interested, that list was in the three-twenty, um, packet on page forty or forty-four.
Thank you. In there.
Yeah.
Fernanda, did you have a question? Because I saw you over there.
Well, I was trying to, the reason I was asking is because I thought I was missing something. The RNESU assessment, is it within this sheet, this, these numbers?
Yes.
And is it spread out or is it in one place?
Um, it's in, uh, that's by function, so.
It is spread out.
It's spread out. That's, that's what I was, I was trying to figure it out, like mathematically where it was, but it's in a lot of places. Okay. That's what I was asking.
Okay. Thank you. That's all right. Just next time ask. Please. Okay. Yes.
Clarifying question. So under the three cent, we have, um, reduced elementary world language. Did we not already do that?
So what happened, what happened was is that it was suggested at one meeting, um, that we do that, and then they were able to bring, put it back in the budget by reducing something else before the first budget failed. You approved the numbers and as we talked about at that board meeting, and it was more than just that meeting. We had many, many conversations with many, many people, um, including our current world language teachers. So yes, um, in conversations with our principals, they were willing to switch something else to hang on to that. And we still hear that that's a pretty big value for many of our community members and students, which is why you don't see it in the one cent. But if you're asking us to hit six-twenty-eight, we're not going to hit six-twenty-eight without hitting people in programs. So it shows back up there.
Which is also the PT library position. Is that one, is that the librarian at?
No.
There is somebody else?
Yes. The librarian at OCA is part-time. This person supports the library. Yes.
So can I move us from the items to the thinking? I'm just trying to figure out right now, I know that, is it A, A and S? Is it Addison Northwest?
Addison Northwest.
That tried it twice already and they defeated a two point eight?
I don't think they were defeated twice. I think they were only defeated once.
No, they did go out for a revote and it was defeated the second time, but yes.
Sorry. Yeah.
That's okay.
I count that as one.
Okay. So, but was that a two point eight reduction? It was, it was nearly three points reduction, three cent reduction, uh, from what I remember. But, or three percent, and then I get confused on what is a three cent reduction from a three percent reduction.
Oh, okay.
So I just, I guess I'm just trying to, I don't know our community well enough to know what they are going to go for and what they're going to support. And so that's, I guess I'm, I'm relying on other people who, who have that pulse better than me on.
I tell you, most of our public are just looking at numbers. They're not, they're not hearing any of this. They're not aware of any of this.
Right.
So all they look at is a number. They're gonna go, psh, that little bit? I mean, I, I don't know how to make them see what we've been talking about. It's very hard to do that because they're just, they're seeing that's a very minor number compared to the overall number.
I, I also think it's a narrative of just the times, right? Everyone's struggling, so.
Exactly. I mean, I don't know how you make them see that there is no other way. There's no more.
I think I was also hearing that people felt that teachers and direct-facing student supporters were being reduced, um, over admin, um, which is not the case, right?
I think someone's understanding of direct may be wrong.
Yeah, and so there was some misinformation.
It is so hard to explain the content, right? Like that's just, you know, and I appreciate this. I will say that I think a graph like that, although you understand it really well, I'm not sure how many people in the public would, and I think I would try to interpret that a little differently graphically for folks, but I do see what the intent of that is in, this one's more clear, the CLA one is way more clear. I just, I mean, we're hoping to have another informational meeting to which five people will come. I mean, that's, I'm just trying to figure out, like, how do we change the narrative out there in the community? Because these are significant changes. Going more than three cents deep is, is, it's going to, I mean, this already is really uncomfortable.
Yeah, even the three is very hard.
The three is very hard to look at that list. It's very hard. We're, we're putting a hardship on the system, you know, to just do a three. And to go, to go out there and, and have it be rejected, phew.
That's the gamble. Maybe that's the question that we should talk about is.
That is the question.
What, what happens if we don't pass a budget, right? Because I, that's important to understand too. We get, what, eighty-seven percent of this year's budget? I mean, how, how do we even do that?
Let's talk about that. Okay. Look, Brenda?
Worst-case scenario.
I mean, no, no, no.
Like a car wash or a bake sale or something? Yeah. I mean, what are we gonna do?
Can we get, can we get the football boosters? Can we get the football boosters?
Yeah, they can raise money, of course, yeah.
Maybe they can raise some money for.
So I don't know how, so the eighty-seven percent is the borrowing authority you're allowed to do until you get a passed budget. So you are allowed to borrow eighty-seven percent of your last year's passed budget. There is no restriction that you have to present or prepare for an eighty-seven percent budget. There is nothing that says you default to, if you can't get a budget, you default to eighty-seven percent. Nothing like that exists. As a matter of fact, if it did, everybody'd say no all the time, right? Yeah. So we would be just in this never-ending cycle. We're required to keep on advertising for a budget until it's passed. The eighty-seven percent only helps us get from where we are today to when we have a passed budget. And if it were to ever come, and I can't imagine that I honestly would, that we were hitting somewhere around March of next year and we didn't have a passed budget, we would have already been taking into account as positions opened up, as people left, we wouldn't have been replacing them. So, so it is true, eighty-seven percent would be harsh and, um, very challenging. It is untrue that we are defaulted and limited to eighty-seven percent.
Well, you say borrow. Does that put us in a hole or is that just kind of?
Just gives us cash until the, till the budget is passed and taxes are collected.
Borrowing against our own budget, right?
Borrowing against future revenues, yes. And there are lots of revenues that you'll still get regardless of a budget. We're still going to get tuition from Barstow. We're still going to get the, um, small schools grant from merging. We're still going to get transportation reimbursement. We're still going to get the special ed block grants. We're still going to get those type of things.
Okay. You too.
You too.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, first of all, I understand how extremely complicated the issue at hand is. Um, but also, but it all, it, um, and I shouldn't take it personally, but as a student, it infuriates me how, not complicated the process of the board is, but just the reception by the community. And I understand that it isn't just that they're rejecting, giving money to the school, but it also affects tax rates and all of that, um, jazz. But, um, sorry, um, I feel like, I mean, at this point, you know, instead of paying teachers, why not just give them lottery tickets? Um, that like seems, wouldn't that make people happy? Uh, stop giving them money just so that their tax rates are lower, which I understand that times are tough and, um, it'd be nice if we had all the money in the world to, uh, for the school, but I feel like in cutting the budget further and further, it just dives deeper and deeper into the problem and it's a backhanded issue because we take money away from the budget lowers their tax rates, then it just, that, like on a different level, lowers the morale of students at the school because we're seeing that our resources are being taken away. And I, as much as I love Otter Valley, I see how imperfect it is and for so many other people, it is just not, um, it's like, the, the environment that we want and that would be able to create to make the experience better for students requires so many more resources. And I'm not saying we should just throw more and more money onto it and take it away from the community, but I'm just saying that it's hypocritical of people within the community to be like, oh, well, um, sorry, um. That they want, yes, thank you, that they want better for their children, yet they are not willing to give more money and just show their money where their mouth is. Um, but yeah, yet again, like, again, sorry, I understand how complicated it is and there's so many factors involved, but it is just so hypocritical and infuriating to hear, um, the hypocrisy. And it's so complicated to understand and it'd be nice if we could talk in front of the entire town and explain to them how it works, and I know that's not a lot, uh, logistical case, but to quote Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about that. End quote.
Um, Jasmine, did you want to say something?
Um, yeah, I agree with Brendan. I think that I was trying to limit our budget, like I cannot imagine my elementary school experience without a language that was such a big part for me. And like, it was just, I don't know, it sort of served as a bonding experience in high school, it's weird to say, but I think that, this is obviously what we're trying to do, I think we should try to maintain the budget as much as possible because I can't imagine us cutting as many corners as we want to with the three percent. And I really think, my chemistry teacher said something about how she didn't vote for her school's budget because of like a percent that we talked about that a lot of people were misunderstanding. And so just informing the community, I think is our best bet to keep the amount of money that we need to run schools effectively and also, like, having the public behind us.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, I'll give you a little political tip, Brendan. Calling people hypocritical is not the way to win their votes. Um, there are a couple of things, I'm just going to do this very briefly because it really has nothing to do with the decision we're making tonight. The trust in institutions in our country has gone down drastically. I mean, the military and the police used to be two of the most popular institutions. Um, their popularity has way declined. You, I don't think you can name an institution that, the Supreme Court, where the, the popularity and, and trust and faith has gone up.
Oh, presidency.
Oh, presidency, yeah. And you name it, pick one. Um, so the, there's that kind of background noise that's an issue. And, and we also have to, I think, accept and acknowledge that that lack of trust extends to the schools as well. And a lot of the complaints about the word administration is really a complaint that we don't feel like we're getting our money's worth. Our kids' test scores aren't doing well, um, we don't see our graduates thriving. I had a conversation a month ago with somebody who, who's, uh, child was very, very successful at Otter Valley and, uh, feels like they're behind the curve at UVM, that we're not competing with Nieda, Massachusetts, when, when, when you guys go to college, that they'll have had more AP tests and, and courses, they'll have more enrichment, this and that and the other thing because they're rich and we're not. So those two attitudinal issues are, are part of what's going on here. And unfortunately, we're in the position of having to respond to that because when Brenda says we're, you know, we're right in the middle of the curve or we're even, we're even charging a little less per student than other places, taxpayers don't hear that. And, and we've had lots of discussions about how do we educate people? How do we represent these things? I don't think it's going to work. Um, maybe, you know, a dancing bear on Facebook or something, but, but I, I, I don't see how it's going to work. I think we're faced with a situation where we have to cut and, and, and the thing I'm afraid of is a cycle like happened in Brandon, you guys were very little, um, I don't know when it was, eight or 10 years ago, where there were five budget votes and each time it got shaved a little more. It's, it's, that's a terrible cycle to fall into. It, it, it worries me a lot and, um, because I agree with your point, I agree with your major point, that, that our schools probably require more money. I, I'll drop the probably, I think our schools require more money to be the kind of excellent schools we want them to be. So it's a conundrum. And, and what we have to do as a board tonight is try to find the sweet spot where the public is going to accept that we're really trying to trim the budget and, and, and keep taxes down without hurting the, the children in our buildings too much. And it's, um, and I don't have the answer to Fernanda's question, that's, that's really what the question is. What do we do to get people to say, yeah, this is acceptable, we can live with this, we'll vote for this, even though our family budget's tight, even though we're scared of inflation, people are terrified of inflation, even though our grocery bill's going up all the time? What are we willing to do to support the school? It's a really tough call. Um, I don't have a magic suggestion to make.
I just, I guess I'm just sitting here very uncomfortable because I'm, I'm realizing, given a choice, right? A community can raise a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for lights on a football field, given a choice of how they want to spend their money. But we can't raise enough to offer the programs we feel are important to the kids. You know, it's just, there, there's an issue, you know, I, I'm having a difficult time with the conversations of tonight.
Well, because those are individual people, both of our businesses.
Given a choice, right.
For most of our businesses that are putting forward something.
Totally. I, I under, that's what I mean. I understand that, that that's what's funding that project. And I, I, you know, like I said, I mean, I wasn't being facetious, maybe that the football booster club can raise money for some of these programs that we're cutting. Like, at some point, can we bring them back? You know, can we get others to, to help out outside of what we're raising?
There's people in the community that never had kids, ever, and they pay taxes forever, or they're elderly and they're feeling the pinch and they're still paying taxes. You know, that's a main, that's a big part of the community, so they're, they're very hard to convince. You know, it's a very.
It's not even just that, right? I mean, people are deferring maintenance on their homes, they're keeping cars longer, you know, putting, putting groceries on credit cards, like that's the world we're living in right now.
I'm just real. I just want to be able to have a conversation that I don't think, I want people to be informed. I want people to understand what is going away and the impact of that before they say, that's not enough in cents. You know, like, that's, that doesn't impact my, my taxes enough. You know, it's a sacrifice. I, I, I understand it, for some people, too big a sacrifice, but there's also, for those people, there's also a little bit of relief, right? They're, they're under, they get a, they get a little bit of relief from that. So it's just a way of convincing people, um, to be informed about what this means because I just, I, I'm afraid that people are, are going to vote it down without that information.
Any ideas?
Well, I don't think it's personal for a lot of people, they don't feel it when they go in and they ju, they see the form and they, there's nobody there to make them feel accountable. What if students were there?
Should be there to guilt trip them.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not kidding.
Please give us money.
Students there to answer questions.
No, they just have to be so far away from the polling place.
Actually, me and Brendan were just talking about, uh, last year, was it, when we had certain committees, we were both part of the community committee.
Student council, yeah.
Yeah, on student council. And we were talking about just now, actually, going out and reaching out in the community to not only, because the whole point of community committee is to show the community how important the school is. So like, it's mostly volunteering, clearing up the community, just to show that these high schoolers benefit to the community. And we were just talking about doing something to inform the public about, like, how they could, that our test scores by, or like why their test scores are so bad, just explaining, explaining things and also convincing them that we do, we need this money and if you want to see a change, a positive change in the school, then you need to not cut our budget by two percent.
And there's all, there's, yeah, there's, um, the youth and adults transforming school together class specifically, and we're in the process right now of working on like a plan to either improve morale around the school facilities or just working on something generally to improve the school. And, um, we've been talking a lot about the budget and going through it and getting the students to understand in that class is really, um, it's really helpful because now these people are seeing what's hap, the students are seeing what's happening and they're like, oh, well, now that we know what's going on, we want to see some, uh, do something about it. So again, once people realize what's actually happening, I feel like that, um, can be helpful. So we could work out with, um, something about doing outreach with the community, I feel like, particularly from students who are well-informed on the issue.
Or, or, you know, maybe do a piece in the reporter and have them, Stephen Jupiter, interview some students and student perspective on the budget.
Hey, Stephen Jupiter, are you listening?
George.
No, Stephen is on the call.
He's on the call. That's a great idea. I mean, that's, that's a wonderful idea. And honestly, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Um, Sue, did you have a question?
I loved hearing from you two as a community member and someone, I, I always vote for the school budget. I'm worried, this is, I'm worried this year about the community. I think there's a real disconnect, like, you know, and I don't know if it's sort of this post-COVID isolationism, people have not, people need to come into the school more, people need to attend these meetings because this is really important work that you're doing and it's very informative to sit in this room with all of you making these decisions and knowing how much care and carefulness goes into this. But I can have, young people can work the polls. If you give me some names, I will put them on the polls, number one. Number two, maybe some young, I mean, people who are running for office stand outside the polls and talk to people, maybe some students want to stand outside the polls and say, let me tell you about the budget, let me tell you how I'm affected, I am personally affected by this budget reduction. I, I mean, I don't know how many of you young people are really involved in this, but you, you guys have great voices and I think it would be really nice for the community to hear it.
I hear.
Sure.
Yeah, I want to echo true appreciation for your representation of students. I'm wondering too if the communication with the public indicates more how each school is impacted by the cuts. Which cuts actually impact which schools? And I know, um, particularly looking at this, thinking of some students that would probably love to speak to the board about the impact this might have on them at Nashabie, um, having been in an experience where they'd been, um, put in smaller, or two classrooms in the past, when now they're in three and the impact it had on their social, emotional learning, relationships, and the ability to even access learning throughout the course of the day. So while I totally understand direct services, I know direct instruction classroom teachers provide every day, um, and we do have kids that have been impacted in the last few years since COVID with class reductions, um, at our school, that we've seen growth in this past year, being in a little smaller class sizes, but bonding with their teachers, healing relationships with classmates, um, things like that. So it would be great to also get some elementary boys to share the experience of what it's like when they lose teachers and, and those relationships on a day-to-day.
Can I ask a question about timeline? How much time do we have?
Next Tuesday. You have to vote a new budget in by next Tuesday so that we can have a, um, informational meeting on the 23rd and the vote on April 30th.
Okay, us, you mean?
Yeah.
I understand that, but I'm talking about April, when, April 30th is what we want the community to do?
April 30th is the, is the vote.
Twenty-third is the.
Okay. Greenup Day is when?
What?
Greenup Day is before that, right?
May, it's after.
Okay, it's after. I, I guess I'm just trying to think of an event where people can show up and.
Eclipse.
Oh, my gosh, everybody's going to be at the.
Next weekend, yeah, it's a huge.
Field trip.
Right, there's Friday, there's Saturday events, there's Sunday events, there's lots of eclipse events happening. Maybe that's when we can organize some kids. I'm just.
I, I want to throw a cautionary word about having kids advocate. Um, you don't want to create an impression that kids are being manipulated by adults for a political agenda and, and particularly for the young ones. Um, I think, you know, two school board members want to get up and talk about the budget, that's fantastic. Uh, and maybe, you know, other informed high schoolers, but, but having a cute kindergartner with a sign that says, don't, don't make my teacher grow away.
Nashabie has a student government, right?
Yeah. We do have a student council. Um, I also think, um, yeah, super cautionary about the kids making public appearances to talk. I, I guess we also have adults that could advocate for them and have heard their voice and would speak on their behalf as, you know, from the experience. We do have a student government.
You can totally volunteer, we're not going to.
No. So from the administration's standpoint, you've presented a one percent reduction, or one cent reduction and a three cent reduction. What's your take on that? I mean, you've presented what you think that we could do in that instance, but where do you fall? Do you see that we, you know, should we go for the full three cent reduction?
No.
Well, and I'm okay with that, but I'm, I'm just asking their opinion. So, um, I think you have to give them some, I think you have to give them something, however.
No, I'm saying we can go for the one cent and.
I just, I, you know, I just don't know that, you know, when you say a one cent reduction, everyone's like.
Well, the truth is, the one cent, as she, as she stated, doesn't affect a whole lot because nobody signed up for one, one wasn't even there. So it shows you did something, but you're not actually losing anything because there wasn't anything there to really get rid of.
Well, except, yeah.
Dean of students.
Dean of students.
Okay.
There was something.
I don't remember the whole.
That was, well, no, but.
I don't remember saying.
There were things that were needed, but yes, you're right.
And the RNESU stuff is real positions too. Yeah.
I think that if you're going to do that, you're going to have to do some major sell of this. So you're going to have to get out in front of people and I don't know how you're going to do that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not enough to be in the paper. No offense, Stephen Jupiter.
He was there too.
Headline, headline.
Yeah, headline, there you go, that's the headline.
But we do want to be there.
Right. And I don't know how you get people to come out to a, an, an informational meeting. We know that, I mean, we had two people on February 29th or whatever day it was, so.
Kevin and I are willing.
Actually, we have more people here tonight, thank you, than we did that night, so.
Sue was there.
Yes, I know, but there, yeah, but we still have more. It's nice.
With a sign or something.
Oh, yeah.
We can have a, a Lucy, what is it, the booth, ask questions, kiss you.
Um, people tend to avoid that like the plague. I'm sorry, we've tried that before, we've had booths, we've had all sorts of things. Come see the board and as soon as they see board, they're like, it's the truth.
They want to complain in the dark, they don't want to.
Yeah, right, they don't want to come and actually talk, they don't want to know the truth sometimes, I think that's what the case is.
I'm pretty sure Kevin said he would dress up like a bear.
I heard him.
Yeah.
He said that.
On Facebook.
Yeah.
We just need more stickers on the buses.
More stickers on the buses?
Do it.
Maybe we should get hats for everybody.
Hats, yep.
Yeah.
Well, in the interest of, of spreading the pain, I'd like to move that the board not take a stipend for this next fiscal year.
Second, do we need a second? All second.
Discussion?
What's that total amount?
Not much.
It's like 19,000.
It's invisible.
I don't know what that does for anybody, I mean, you'd want to add it next year, wouldn't you? I mean, you don't want to do that every year.
Well, no, I mean, I like money, but, uh.
Or take a cut, you know, I, you know, to show.
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, you're, you're not, you're not going to attract board members, and we're down five, uh, if you're not paying anybody. So, uh, we don't do it for the money, obviously, because, you know, that, we're not getting rich here, but, um.
I mean, that occurred to me, it, it occurred to me too, and then I thought, that's not really real money. I mean, it's real, you know, it's, it's nice to get, but it's like, it's, it is a token gesture. People might think, oh, finally, they're not getting paid that huge amount, which we don't get paid, like, I wouldn't want people thinking, like, people on the school board make a lot of money.
It's a gesture, they wouldn't even see it.
Yeah, it kind of, yeah, like, it's, it's, it's a nice gesture, but it's a.
I'm 100% sure you can, because we already voted on it. It passed at the town meet, at annual meeting. They are employees.
Yeah, and we're considered employees, right?
You're, you're considered officers and at the annual meeting.
We have to buy labor laws, right?
That was on the agenda, and it passed.
That's true.
Trump showed me that.
So, if you wanted to do that.
It really worked.
So if you wanted to do that, you'd have to do it at the next annual meeting.
Okay.
Would it happen, would it, could it be done at this next informational meeting? I mean.
Undo what they did earlier? I don't think, I don't, I.
Okay.
Is the annual meeting closed yet? Because there wasn't a budget that passed.
No, the things that passed though were above the budget.
Okay.
Let's try.
Well, we do have a motion in a second, don't we need to vote on this?
Well, we were discussing at the moment, so, I mean, that, right, weren't we?
But we're saying we can't do it anyways.
I, right, so, well, let's, I mean, we, you either have to rescind your discussion or we have to actually have a vote. So if we're not rescinding it, all those in favor of cutting our, our stipend.
We vote on a thing that we can't do, then what happens?
Well, I think, I think.
And we tell you, you can't do this anyway.
Right, but I think it's just, you know.
So we look good, but not really.
That's a sure.
All right, if it's, if it's, uh, Chris, is, is it, is it the superintendent and administration's belief that this is an illegal motion? Okay, then I'll rescind it.
There we go.
Give it to the upper.
School board breaks a lot. Budget.
First it's open meeting one, then it's.
We're just, we're like renegade school board.
Use it to bribe community members.
All right, so, getting back to this, um, we can either table this to next week and continue this discussion, or we can decide that we're going to do a 1 cent reduction and put that forth as our budget, because that's kind of what I'm hearing from everyone. Is there a motion for that?
I'd like to move that we go with the 1%.
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion regarding that at the moment?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to work.
Well, whether it works or not, I think we have our work cut out for us to let people understand how we're doing, why we're doing what we're doing.
If it, if it doesn't work, we have to go back anyway.
Yeah.
But I feel like I would much rather go back, uh, and work at it from a position of having done.
Well, I'm hopeful that, you know, the information gets out there that, you know, we did look at a 3 cent reduction and felt that we could not do that to our students.
Exactly, yeah.
So.
We're not serving, I, I feel like it, it's a, it's a very easy position to take to say, we could not in good conscience do that, we could not in good conscience vote on the 3%, or 3 cent reduction, it just isn't, isn't right.
Okay, so, um, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that the town of Brandon cut their budget, and, you know, there's some, maybe some accounting trick involved and so forth and so on, but Brandon voters are going to see a pretty significant cut in the towns, first, from the town's first proposal to the second, and I think there's going to be people wondering why, why can't the school do that? Um, I'm, I'm just pessimistic about the chance of a 1% cut passing, and I'm, I'm, I'm beyond, uh, that, I'm worried about a cyclical phenomenon where they say, oh, they're trying to lowball us, well, let, we'll teach them a lesson, oh, this next one isn't enough, um, and that's a bad thing.
So if you go three and it's not enough anymore.
Exactly. The school budget, or the town budget we're talking about.
It's okay, you never started.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a difference.
Futures here and not paving roads.
Yeah. I, I think we need to, I think you just need to put it out there that we couldn't in good conscience cut 3% because we felt it would take away from kids with the things that they need.
Second.
Okay, I, I mean, I really do, so, and I think we all need to get on board with that same rhetoric.
And Goshen has a humongous, I think, one of the largest increases, and I will go through the door this weekend, and I will talk to people and just let them know where they are.
All right, um.
That's Ted houses.
Oh, they got new people up there?
Apologies to our Goshen listeners.
I know, right? All right, so, um, I'm going to go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor in approving a budget with a 1 cent reduction in the tax rate, um, to present to voters, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so all those, yep, all right, so ayes, put your hands up. All those opposed? So five to two. Okay. All right, so, thank you for that, we are now going to move on.
You're going to adopt the warning, right?
Oh, well, yeah, well, I think that's the next thing on the, yeah.
And please get in the paper.
Yep, all right, so, let's see, F5, so budget consideration, we just did that, so the district informational meeting is here, April 23rd. Are we having it in the auditorium again?
Yes.
Okay, in the auditorium, um, if you want us to, I don't even see it on the agenda here to approve the warning. Brenda?
Well, you need to. Do you want me to read it to you?
Uh-oh, yes, please.
Okay, yes.
I think that, uh, in the preparation, Melinda didn't think that it would.
Yeah, so I think we have to actually wait until next Tuesday.
Well, if you approved a budget.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Okay, all right, well, I just, it's on the agenda, and we had that whole discussion earlier, so.
So there's only one article on the warning, and you've talked about it for two meetings as to the dates.
Okay.
So, um, it is, uh, the legal voters of the Otter Valley Unified Union School District, comprising the voters of the town of Brandon, Goshen, Lester, Pittsburgh, Sudbury, and Whiting, are hereby notified and warned to meet at Otter Valley Union High School in the auditorium. Virtual opposite, option available. Meeting link will be on the website on April 23rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM to conduct the following business, to hear the Board of School Directors of the Unified Union District present their estimated expenses, then the meeting is recessed to Tuesday, April 30th, for the purpose of voting the following article at the annual polls. Sue, did you say seven? Seven to seven for?
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven.
It's going to be seven to seven.
And we need to confirm Lester's time and Whiting's time, but shall the voters of the school district approve the school board to expend $26,979,072, of which the amount the school board has determined necessary for the following ensuing year?
Okay. Um, so who's making that motion?
Making motion to.
Except what she said?
She just said.
Is there a second? Thank you, Barbara.
You put that on the board, on the front of the town office, like, board, school board meeting.
Any discussion regarding that?
Make it more, like, personal.
You know, you put the surety tax duty thing on that sign.
To support that our children's futures, you know, can you just add that in there?
I don't think so, I think it's all.
The reason I have it is because we're.
Legal jargon.
I mean, we're different municipalities.
I, I don't know if it's just advertisement, I don't know if it's.
Well, we're actually dumping that sign, so, if you give me a sign, I can put it to the ground.
All of those that, um, approve the motion, uh, set by Brent and by Barbara, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed?
Nay.
Okay, ayes, have. All right, um, there was just one, yeah. Um, appointment of district clerk for special election. Oh, that's right, you're not going to be here. That's right. So, um, I would appoint Sue Gage.
Nope.
Going to be your board.
Oh, it does have to be our board.
Whoever helps, whoever does it, I'll help you.
We do have a secretary, yeah.
What's happening?
I hear the word clerk, and I hear, ah, and I'm like, huh?
Railroad.
Oh, boy.
By statute, the only one who can take her place during the revo is a union unified school board member. You, you can appoint up to two, and like Sue said, she's going to really do it anyways, just kidding.
And so they would take minutes of the meeting, correct?
Wait, aren't we talking about the vote?
Is this the, are we talking about the 23rd?
We're talking about the polls.
We're talking about.
At the meeting.
Oh, oh, you're talking about the polls, okay.
Right.
Oh, all right. This is when we're actually tallying all the votes.
Oh, on the 30th.
On the 30th.
So you, oh, I can do that?
So, what's the.
Is that what you're asking me to do?
Just to collect the tally and.
Yes, and so it's just two people.
Sue has her, Sue has her hand up.
Well, I was just going to say, you arrive around 6:30, and as the towns bring in the ballots, you just put them, because they have to be co-mingle, so you put them in the box.
Sure.
And then you take them out of the box when we find some people to count them, which is iffy.
Sounds either fun or depressing, depending on the outcome.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's not, you have to be there all day or anything like that, so.
Well, they'll be eager to see the dancing bear and the student representatives.
I'd be happy to help if you want. I'd help you, Barbara.
So you actually officially need to name them.
Thank you.
I, I nominate Barbara Ebling and Lori.
Do whatever it is.
Yep, do whatever it is on April 30th. All right, there we go.
I nominate Kevin to be the dancing bear.
All right. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. All right, board vacancies, so we spoke about this, um, last time, until we have an approved budget, we cannot appoint anyone to our board vacancies, so these will remain open until such time as we have an approved, uh, budget. Okay? All right, we did the Light Up the Valley, truancy homeless home study data.
Yes. Hi, so I shared a presentation with you. Boy, this is what everybody wants to do, is go after the budget discussion. Actually, I have some good news for you, so that's. Okay, so I thought we would start with, I think it's home study that's going to come up first. Yes. So this is the current home study numbers for this current year, broken down by each school. The total number of home study students that we have in OVUU is 76 currently. And then the next slide is sort of a five-year look. Obviously, the blue on the right represents, just to give you sort of a marker, 76 on the, in the total, you can sort of see, um, the orange does represent the, let's see, 2021, so during the pandemic, we sort of took a dip, and then we have increased this year.
I don't understand the distinction between home study and home school.
Same thing.
Oh.
Yeah, the formal name is home study. I had to actually change my own language on that. Okay, so this is our absenteeism last year. We had, um, and we have lots of different pieces of data, but these felt like the most , um, significant ones. Last year, we had 40% of our students had 10 or more excused absences. Now, when we say excused absences, they likely, some of them might, likely had more than 10, and some unexcused, somebody forgot to send in the note, you know, something like that. We had, we had 10, let's see, 12% 20 or more excused absences, 10 plus unexcused, and there's an error there, 20, 20 plus unexcused we had were about 4%. So that was last year. Large concern of, obviously, of 10 or more excused absences across the year, having 40% of students. Um, this, so, that was last year. This year, we have, we took the state's guidance, and then we also added sort of some early warning into our processes, and this year, just so we could show that, we have already made a significant decline. Now, I know that we are not at the end of the school year, but we're, we're close, we're on the other end, and as you can see, we're at about 12% of students have had over 10 excused absences, we're way down in the, in 20 excused absences. All, all of our numbers in general are significantly lower, so, um, very pleased with what we're looking at right now. We do need to make some changes to our five-day letters. The good news is, we have this new system that actually helps the front desk, so we just plunk in all of the, all of the letters, and they actually automatically send them out, so we can put multiple letters in, so if somebody has had five excused absences, it'll be very clearly sort of say that, and it'll say, you know, due to illness, we'll be able to sort of flush that out between somebody who has had five excuse, excused absences from somebody who's, who's had five unexcused absences. So we'll be able to put multiple le, letters in the system next year so that they don't feel nearly as sort of, you know, hate mail when they get them. But I do think that the early warning is helping. It was a lot on our front desks, I mean, they have put a ton of work into this, uh, but to think that by the end of the year, I think it's pretty safe, knock on wood, that we will have cut our 10 plus excused and our, our 20 plus excused more than half by the end of the year, so. Questions about attendance or feedback on letters and things like that, because we're going to, we'll make the change over the summer. Natalie?
I mean, I, I think this is great, but I also wonder how much of the, uh, the absences last year were due to COVID and having to be out of school for five days, right?
Sure.
Because I know one of my kids got COVID twice, and he missed like eight days just because of that.
Right. So I think it's a little bit of, of, a little bit of that, definitely. Also, being at a school for the past eight years prior to this, I think that we, even before the pandemic, we were really pushing up against that 10 excused absences. I don't think, it wasn't as high as 40%, but it definitely wasn't as low as, you know, 10 or 12, 15%. So I agree with you on that. Uh, we, we even had a small bout of the flu and COVID at the beginning of the school year, so we had a little bit of that this year, but not nearly as much as last year. Yes.
You have in the next slide, you have that, uh, students experiencing homelessness is at, um, 1.2%. Is, are you correlating that to the number of absences, or does?
No, as a matter of fact, it's actually, there wasn't a correlation, but that was some data that you all had asked me to report out on. Um, so yes, we have 17 students. I also didn't want to put, break it down into towns or anything, because we could have I also didn't want to put, break it down into towns or anything because we could have identifying information easily, so that's why I just sort of put that in. Yes, correct.
Well, I have a comment and a question. I'll start with a comment. It feels like, a, as a parent, it's, it feels like this year, maybe, um, there's been a bit of a shift back to, for a while, we went through this period where everyone was like, just really cautious about, should I send my child to school? They're not really that sick, but, you know, they have a stuffy nose, whatever, right? So I think there's been a shift, maybe closer to how it used to be, where, you know, yeah, you're a little sick, but you can still go to school, kind of a thing. So I do feel like, as a parent, I felt that shift this year, so I wanted to make that as a comment. And then my question was, are there students that fall into more than one of these buckets? Or is this, or is each student just in one bucket?
No, uh, that's what I'm saying by, we could take these numbers, I, I could have a data points, you know, unlimited data points. Typically, a student that has, let's just go with 10, let's go with 20 excused absences. Typically, that student has closer to 30 absences. Because unless it's an extreme situation where, you know, they had COVID, they had flu, they had taken a once-in-a-lifetime vacation, you know, that kind of thing, that could happen. But typically, that 20 excused leads to a higher number. Also, when you get into the 10 unexcused and 20 unexcused, those are many times, 20 unexcused could be upwards of 40 or 50 days unexcused.
So the same student could be in two colleges?
Yeah.
Yes.
10 excused, 10 unexcused.
Exactly, exactly.
Can you talk about what constitutes excused and unexcused? And who is the arbiter of that decision?
Whoever gets the letter.
Yes, so, every student is allowed 10, what they call lawful, excused days. So in other words, the first 10 days, I really hesitate to say this because then it feels like, hey, great, we all get 10 free days, when the data shows that four to five days act, a year impacts student learning. So the first 10 days, we're really not collecting notes or anything like that. And the parent just calling in and saying, my child is sick, is considered excused. Now, if a parent does not call in at all, and we know, you know, we try, we do not get anything back, we will mark them as unexcused because we haven't heard from the parent. So after 10 excused days, in order for a student's absence to be counted as excused, they have to either bring in a doctor's note or speak with the surgeon. Sort of have that conversation about sort of like, this is what's going on. Uh, and then the nurse sort of can help with, like, yeah, they're, you know, if, if they need any guidance, you know, it might be they'll be out today, they'll be back tomorrow, it's fine. Or it might be, what do you think? Should I send them back tomorrow? Yeah, send them back tomorrow, and we'll call you if, you know, if it's not going well. So that's sort of the difference. If somebody goes, um, on vacation, there is a form that can be filled out, and it sort of asks, you know, what the activity is, what the learning is going to be, and, uh, what evidence is a student going to bring back? If they go ahead and fill that all out and bring the evidence back, then that can be counted as an excused absence. But if the family fills out the form and then never brings the evidence back, then we really need to count that as an unexcused absence. And I can speak for what we did at Lulstrope. We used to put them in as unexcused, and then when everything came back, Sarah would just go back through and sort of change them to, to excused. So, obviously, if we have, um, you know, a family that has, uh, an emergency, you know, a death in the family, they have an ill, a serious illness in the family, there are all those things that we take into consideration, um, when, when marking those excused, not excused. Any other questions? If there's, like I said, if there's anything that we can do differently with, um, letters or communicating or anything, definitely open to those suggestions, so.
Thank you. Okay, um, next one is RNESU board update. So I'm sorry to inform you that our superintendent is leaving as of June 30th. That was our biggest, um, news out of the RNESU board meeting.
Unacceptable.
I will make it so.
Is there a statue? Is there a statue where she can't leave till we have a budget?
Um, well, believe me, I, I've tried everything, so. Anyway, so, uh, the RNESU board will be, uh, their next meeting, which is April 17th, will be, um, putting together a committee, um, pretty much, uh, the same committee, um, at least as far as the person, not the actual person, but the, like, position, um, that we did when we hired Kristin. So, um, that is comprised of the RNESU board, it's comprised of a principal, a support staff, um, the admin, um, people, so Marsha Bruce, Alexis Blake, um, who am I, um, Brenda? And, and Melinda. Um, and then we will also have, um, is there one other? Principal, support staff, I feel like there's another one. I'm going to teach her. So that's usually what we do. So, um, that committee will be determined at that meeting. We have already put together a timeline. Um, we hope to have a new, uh, RNESU superintendent by May 31st. It's very ambitious, but needs to be done. And, um, the ad is up in school spring. I can tell you that we have three candidates at this point. Um, can't tell you anything else, other than we have three.
Applicants?
Three applicants, yeah. Um, and so, uh, the board will meet and determine next steps at that next meeting. We have also asked Max Berman, um, who is our, what is this?
Communication.
Communications coordinator? Thank you. Um, to put together, last time we did a thought exchange, which we no longer have thought exchange, we've asked him to put together a Google form with questions that will go out to the public and to our, um, community members so that they can tell us what they would like to see in our next superintendent. So that will help, uh, guide the board in their next decision.
Clone of Kristin, is that acceptable answer?
Believe me.
Genetic cloning?
I totally know that that's a smart move.
What could possibly go wrong with cloning?
Other than that, the RNESU board, um, reduced the budget for next year, which we've already talked about tonight. And, um, yeah, is there anything else that we did that you want to talk about?
I don't remember doing anything else.
Okay, well, then I guess I covered it. All right, um, other business for future discussion, consideration? Anything? Bueller?
We talked about inviting Pietro.
Yes, yeah, we talked about that earlier tonight, that's already on my list here. So we'll talk to him about available dates, and we'll go from there. Okay. All right, um, we also have our annual work plan, um, and, um, as Barbara already noted, we'll be talking about facilities at our next meeting, um, and summer projects.
I think you want to honor.
So anything that you want to bring up?
Yeah.
Let's put the tech ad and Muslimu on the, on the agenda then, please.
Good idea. Can we even talk about it without having a budget?
Well, we have facility funds that we can use, but, I mean, and it's just, it's kind of like, she gives us an idea of what we've got, and.
We can certainly talk about needs.
How that might look to the community that we're talking about spending money.
Well, but normally, it's to do, you know.
I get it.
I know.
I'm thinking about the perception.
Well, we may not decide to do anything, but it, it is, you know, something that we do at, at this time of year.
Because a lot of times, it's like, uh, this roof needs, I don't know.
I know.
Yeah, a lot of it is, yeah.
It's a little bit more like. Held together with.
Okay.
Then we put the football booster team out there.
Yeah, we can, we can say the locker room leaks.
All right, superintendent report.
Uh, not much. Uh, school district calendar for next year is in there. I am happy I did not officially put the last day of school in there yet.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, student and parent advisory council, uh, did meet, we're going to do some more of that. Uh, there'll be the student leadership summit in May, which will start getting student names from the principals. Um, April 8th, we've been talking about that quite a bit. All students and staff received solar glasses, um, courtesy of a federal grant from OV teacher Ms. Keats. So that's pretty exciting. Students will be released, uh, according to the normal early release day schedule. Um, many schools around the state have completely canceled at this point, not because of safety, but because of congestion on the roads. Um, and we're hopeful that we can get everyone out of here at 11:30.
Will you be giving out glasses soon Friday or on Monday?
Their glasses?
I would do Friday.
I will make sure someone gets them out on Friday, I'm, I'm sure that's true.
I have a feeling.
Then they have to remember that they need them on Monday.
Might not see too many kids.
Yeah, 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 um.
I've been delivering them to the elementary school.
There you go. There you go.
Send them home on Friday.
Um, recruitment efforts, I shared that with you, um, a bit ago. We also, uh, we have a great video. Um, Kevin and some others noticed a couple, a couple of things in the recruitment video to be tweaked, which were, um, and we had my, uh, Melinda and Brooke, our coordinator of HR, just went to a job fair, um, got a lot of names, which was pretty exciting. Um, and then if you haven't been following the press, um, Governor Scott sort of went off-grid and named Secretary of Education, that wasn't necessarily the committee's choice. And she's getting an awful lot of press at, at this point.
That's not good.
So I just linked in a, a news article from Vermont Public, so just for your information.
Great, thank you. All right, so our next meeting is next Tuesday. We're still meeting next Tuesday. Um, and that will be here at 6 o'clock. Please remember that our OV district info meeting is also here on Wednesday, April 23rd. It'll be in the auditorium. Um, do we need executive session tonight?
We do not.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move. Second.
All right, goodbye, thank you.
Thank you.